I would like to call this meeting the Prince William County School Board to order. Pursuant to school board policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication. A school board member, Diane Ralston, will participate in this meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. The clerk will so note in the minutes of the meeting. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to motion enter closed session. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter a closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the resignation, performance, discipline, appointment, and release of specific employees, and to receive advice on related legal issues as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to review and take action on the disciplinary appeals for individual students as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to consult with division counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation involving employment and educational matters as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, 2, and 7. Four, to consult with the staff and division counsel regarding legal requirements specific to the pandemic which require legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. Five, to consult with division counsel regarding specific legal matters regarding to the Freedom of Information Act and the expenditure of school funds as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. And six, to receive information and discuss with staff plans for security of the Kelly Leadership Center and other school board facilities and property and the safety of persons using those facilities and property under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A19.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. At this time, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in one hour. So we're gonna first, we're now returning to open session from closed session. We're gonna move to our first action item, which is the closed session certification. And I will, a motion is in order. Ms. Jackson.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of March 16th, 2022, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I second.
Ms. Jessie seconds a motion. Any discussion? As seeing there's no discussion, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie, you got a vote. And Ms. Wall.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Okay. Moving on to closed session, action items. We have 9.01, which is the approval of appointments and releases for specific employees. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in a closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Great. Okay. Moving on to the next action item, which is approval of the SMAPD recommendation for the long-term suspension of student HS22077. Motion is in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve staff's recommendation for the long-term suspension of student HS22077 through February 11th, 2022, and that the Prince William County School Board also approve the recommendations for the student's return to school. Any non-traditional education eligibility determination contained in the SMAPD letter, the student's program placement at the time of the student's return to school, as determined by the IEP team, and the final determination for the site location for implementation of the program identified by the IEP team as determined by SMAPD.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Ms. Zargarpur seconds a motion. Any discussion? Okay. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one abstain. Williams, motion passed.
Okay. Moving on to, was that the last action item we had? Right. Okay. All right. So tonight, we have something special. We'll now move to our Thriving Futures Focus. Tonight, we'll recognize some of our student athletes who have won state championships for swim and wrestling. We look forward to, okay, we look forward to recognizing additional state championship winners at future meetings. Let's start with Mrs. Adele Jackson of the Brentsville District as she introduces some of the winners from her district. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. We'd like to congratulate the following student athletes who won state championships in swimming and wrestling. As you hear your name, please feel free to step forward. From Patriot High School in swimming, the state champion in the boys' 200 individual medley and the boys' 100 fly is Landon Gentry. State champions in the boys' 200 medley relay are Josh Hochar, Vincent Nguyen, Alex Martins, and Landon Gentry. The state champions in the boys' 400 freestyle relay are Josh Hochar, Alex Martins, Peter Gilbert, and Landon Gentry. In wrestling, the state boys' wrestling championship at 182 pounds is, I'm so sorry, Vincent Joe Corvetto. At this time, Dr. Michael Bishop, principal of the Patriot High School, would like to make a few brief remarks.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. McDade. With me tonight are the families and coaches of student athletes from Patriot High School who competed and won at the Virginia High School League State Championship meets for wrestling and swim. I would like to present the following student athletes and their accomplishments. Vincenzo Corvetto, state wrestling champion, 182 pounds, undefeated season, finished with a record of 36-0. Head coach, Rich Edwards. For swim, earning their second team state championship in our school's history, head coach Lisa Bussian, assistant coach Jen Birch. Boys' 200 medley relay, receiving All-America status. Boys' 400 freestyle relay, receiving All-American status, and 6A state record. Students on the state championship relays are Peter Gilbert, Josh Hochar, Alex Martins, Vincent Nguyen, and Landon Gentry. Landon Gentry was also the winner of two additional state championships in the boys' 200 individual medley, attaining All-American status, and the boys' 100 fly, also attaining All-American status, and the 6A state record. As their principal and on behalf of their coaches, family, and friends, I want to publicly congratulate them on this honor.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, and thank you all for being here. I'm fortunate to also recognize, to congratulate the following student athletes who won state champions in wrestling from the Brentsville District High School as well. The state girls' wrestling champion at 136 pounds is May Kyler. And I believe, at this time, Mr. Bretstein, assistant wrestling coach at Brentsville District, would like to make a few brief remarks. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. With me, I have May Kyler, our girls' 136-pound state champion. And I'll go ahead and give you guys a little bit of a background of May. So the Brentsville District Wrestling Program is known throughout the state of Virginia as one of the top programs. Over our many years, the program has amassed nine team state champions and 38 individual state champions. However, 38 is a special number to us this year, right? Number 38 is our first female state champion in school history. Number 38, May Kyler, is who we celebrate tonight. May started wrestling in middle school over at Marsh Teller, but her competitive background comes from her training in judo where she's ranked third in the United States at her respective age group and her respective weight class. She's had a dominant season this year in all-girl competitions, as she did not yield a single point to a female opponent, and she pinned every girl she wrestled in the first period, which is massively impressive. May also competed as a bar she started this year, taking sixth in the region wrestling boys and girls for the VHSL State Championships and VHSL Region Championships. So she had a very successful year. But her success comes as no surprise to our coaching staff, as May is the athlete that every coach wants in their program. She's humble, she's focused, and she gives her all in every aspect of the sport and in school. In addition to her hard work in the wrestling room, she also gets done in the classroom, earning a 4.0 GPA, and she's an active member of the National Honor Society as well. So, May, you are paving the way for women's wrestling in the state of Virginia, and we'd like more girls to experience the success that you have had this year. So please give another round of applause to our state champion, May Kyler.
Okay. Ms. Jackson, thank you very much. I think we'll move on to Ms. Lisa Zargarpur of the Coles District.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. When I call your name, please come forward. We'd like to congratulate the following student athlete who won the state championship in wrestling from Colgan High School. State boys' wrestling champion at 220 pounds is Elijah Gonzalez. At this time, if Mr. Bruce Bernard, he's the wrestling coach at Colgan High School, if he would like to come forward and make a few brief remarks, if he's here.
Okay. I think Mr. Crowe will go look for him if he's available, and if not, we'll move on to the next. But can, nope. All right. Well, congratulations again. Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Justin Wilk of the Potomac District.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Thank you, athletes, for being here tonight. We'd like to congratulate the following student athlete who won the state championship in wrestling from the Potomac High School, home of the Panthers. State girls' wrestling champion at 113 pounds is Samantha Boadu. At this time, my colleague and friend, March Madness is coming, so Principal Brandon Bowles of Unfortunately, the University of Michigan, would like to make a few brief remarks.
Good evening, Dr. McDade, superintendent's staff, school board members, and our Potomac District Representative, Mr. Wilk. My name is Brandon Bowles. I'm privileged to serve as the principal at Potomac Senior High School and thrilled to recognize Sam Bodu this evening. Sam is the reigning Cardinal District Champion, Region 6B Champion, and also the number-one ranked female wrestler at 112 pounds in the state of Virginia. As impressive as her accomplishments are on the mat, maybe more impressive are her accomplishments in the classroom. Sam has earned over a 4.0 GPA. She's a four-year. She's a four-year NJROTC student and has taken several of our Cambridge classes at Potomac. Most recently, Sam has been recognized as one of only 20 students in the nation to receive the prestigious CNAF Aviation Flight Academy Award, and so she's received that scholarship, one of 20 in the nation. So when you talk about focusing on thriving futures, look no further than Potomac's own
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Ms. Jessie of the Okaquan District.
We would like to congratulate the following student athlete who won the state championship in wrestling. From Woodbridge High School, the state boys' wrestling champion at 120 pounds is Tyler Tannett. At this time, Tyler. At this time, Mr. Michael Wright, the director of students' activities at Woodbridge High School, would like to make a few brief remarks. Thank you, and thank you for returning.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. McDade, it is truly an honor and a privilege for me to be before you this evening to recognize Tanner, excuse me, Tyler. Tyler is not just a state champion this year. I'm just gonna go over a few of his accomplishments while he was a member of the Woodbridge Wrestling Team. Two-time district champ, two-time regional champ, three-time state placer. He finished fourth as a sophomore. He won the state championship as a junior, and he repeat won the state championship as a senior this year. I think that deserves a great round of applause. Tyler has accumulated over 100 wins during his career at Woodbridge Senior High School. His plans, he's currently being recruited by multiple schools in the state of Virginia. His plans is to continue his wrestling career at the collegiate level in the fall. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Tyler for his contributions to Woodbridge High School's wrestling team.
Okay. At this time, Dr. McDade, I'd like to invite you to make some comments.
Thank you so much, Dr. Latif. Thank you to our school board members for recognizing our outstanding student athletes, and congratulations to all of our students for your amazing accomplishments. We are PWCS proud. In addition to congratulating our student athletes, I also would like to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of our coaches, starting with the Brentsville District High School wrestling coaches, including head coach Rick Adams, and assistant coaches Brett Stein, Tom Dillinger, Prince Hill, and Dick Adams. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. And to our principal, thank you so much for your leadership, Dr. Meis, in supporting all of the amazing programs at Brentsville High School. For Patriot High School, I would like to acknowledge swim coaches Lisa Bussian and Jen Birch, and wrestling coaches Rich Edwards and Micah Zerring. A special congratulations to the Colgan High School wrestling coach, Bruce Bernard, Potomac High School wrestling coach, Nick Pirelli, and Woodbridge High School wrestling coaches, Ty Knapp, Alex Stanley, Cody Zeeman, Sergio Morales, and Nate Gaines. I would also like to acknowledge the leadership of all of our school's presence, including to Dr. Meis. We have Dr. Bishop, as well as Tim Healy, Dr. Tim Healy from Colgan, Ms. Heather Abney from Woodbridge, and Mr. Brandon Bowles from Potomac High School. Thank you all so much for your tremendous leadership and support of our student athletes And to close out this special part of our meeting today, I want to note that we are aware of many state-level, award-winning students across our division, and we plan to recognize our students and their coaches during the next several board meetings. Congratulations again to each of you, and thank you for representing PWC as well.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. So before we excuse you, we're gonna have you come up and take a group picture with the board. But before we do that, I want to give the most important thanks, and that's to the parents of all of our student athletes, including you all who are here tonight, because without you all, these students wouldn't be where they are. And it's very important to our school system to have you all engaged with our schools as you do, and so we are very grateful for everything you do to contribute to our schools, our teams, our boosters, and everything. And for all of you who are great teammates, and I know you have great teammates who are not here tonight, congratulations to them as well. So we invite you up, please, parents included, to the front here, and the board will take a picture, and then certainly you're welcome to stay to enjoy the rest of the board meeting or certainly be excused.
Everybody in? I'm gonna take a few, I'm gonna take a few on the phone, and then a few on the camera, and then I'm sure everyone wants to get some shots as well. On three, you want a big grin. One, two, three. One more. One, two, and three. Same thing. One, two, three. And, one, two, three. Looks good. Somebody else?
Is there a way I can get those pictures on the camera?
Sure. What we can do is, I can, what I should, I can ask the principals?
So how would I get it?
I let him, uh, principal know. You can check with him. It's probably the safest way. Okay. Yeah. Congratulations. They said they're gonna do a picture with him.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much, and that was fantastic, and appreciate that, Dr. McDade. To Diana Galata, B. Simpson, Communications, and all the folks that did the work to make this happen, we appreciate it. And if there are students we missed, we'll certainly promise to try to, you know, get them here the next few times. But that was wonderful, and I think that's why, I mean, Dr. Hart reminded me as I walked back up here, this is why we do this work. So thank you all very much. At this time, I would now like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone can stand, and Donna Sharifi, our student member, will lead us in the pledge.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, motions in order. Ms. Jackson.
Sorry. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Jessie seconds a motion. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Uh, huh, yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes.
So the vote is seven yes, one not present at vote. Williams, motion passed.
Adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay. Please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Yes.
And so the vote is seven yes, one not present at vote. Williams, motion passed.
Moving on to citizen comment time. Those citizens who signed up in advance with the clerk may address the school board this evening when they're called to the podium. The citizen comment period for regular school board meetings is limited to one hour, with the first half-hour reserved for comments on agenda items only. In the second half-hour for comments on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations of the policies of Prince William County Schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified or they'll be asked to step down. We have 10 speakers on agenda items and 10 on non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decor manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. When you are called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And I'll start by calling the first five speakers. I'd like to remind the audience that we request no cheering or jeering, so that folks at home who are watching can hear, and so we can hear the complete statements as our citizens give their speeches. Our first four, or five to call up will be Jennifer Rakowski, Jennifer Roberts, Janice Sullivan, Sandra Kern, and Ashley Berger. Ms. Rakowski.
Good evening, Chairman LaChief, Vice Chairwoman Jackson, Dr. McDade, and school board members. My name is Jennifer Rakowski, and I reside in the Okaquan District. Tonight, you are adopting the budget, but there are some things I'd like to point out or share. There was a consent agenda item for hiring a tutoring company for high-dose tutoring. Have you asked any of the teachers about whether they, how they feel about the program? Would it be successful, and why we aren't able to staff it? There are questions about the salary increases and how that works. How are salaries improving across the board? I know you say that steps do not equate years of service. However many people I tried explaining the situation to are not happy. Feels kind of like a slap in the face to be placed lower. And also, there's an issue with missteps for employees who have been around for years and have lost time. Educators are still quitting the profession. You have openings now, and they're still not filled. Put salary benefits as a priority to show your staff that you value them and want PWC to be the place where the best staff from other counties to come to. Also, I strongly encourage you to think about having a TA for every elementary school classroom. I taught high school, and for a day, I subbed an elementary classroom, grades four and five. Holy moly, elementary educators are way underappreciated. I could not believe how many interruptions to a single day there are, specialists coming and going throughout the day to pull kids out, or they're doing push-in, four preps, and half of the planning time of a secondary teacher. And that's if their planning time isn't taken by CLTs or having to cover another class during our sub shortage. While hiring more teachers may seem like a good idea to lower class sizes, please remember that many of our schools, especially our older buildings and traditional K-8 buildings, simply do not have the physical room to place simply do not have the physical room to place more teachers. Listening to administrators about the physical needs for renovating buildings would also be a huge morale booster to the staff. I learned that the Division may not be renewing NearPod license for next year. Some educators reached out and were upset about that because they really invested themselves into it. It's up to possibly the school to purchase a NearPod license. If a teacher does it, it's $397, but it may not be enough gigabytes for what they do. So please consider renewing the NearPod license for the Division or doing assessment of how much they need. Thank you for the work you've put in and continue to put into the budget. Please talk to your principals, teachers, and your classified staff about what they need to improve facilities, promote student growth, and provide compensation resources to make your staff feel valued and heard. Thank you.
Jennifer Roberts.
Good evening, Dr. McDade, Dr. Latif, members of the school board. My name is Jennifer Roberts from the Gainesville District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of School Library Month. As an avid reader and the mother of two, I understand the extraordinary ability that books have to help children understand themselves, process difficult and sensitive information, and make sense of the world around them. Seeing positive images of themselves and other people in their community in the pictures and reflected in the stories told on the pages can give students a sense of pride, validation, and community. This diversity in reading material can also foster empathy. School Library Month is a wonderful opportunity for us to be intentional about making sure that our public school library books and resources reflect the ethnic, racial, and linguistic diversity of our students, and make sure our students are exposed to these important resources by school librarians and classroom teachers. Several years ago, I had the opportunity to serve as a school library volunteer. My job was to re-shelve books. I enjoyed helping in this capacity, but was always disappointed at the lack of racial and ethnic diversity in books, and many of the books with people of color were outdated biographies. I was also disappointed at the lack of books in different languages. I've also served as a book fair volunteer and observed a repeated disparity in books by authors of color and books featuring contemporary stories with people of color. Prince William County's strategic plan touts a commitment to family and community engagement, which I support. As part of this commitment, I encourage our school librarians to invite the community in to next month's School Library Month celebrations. Our county and surrounding counties are rich with local authors and artists who, excuse me, with local authors and artists who can partner with schools to speak with students about career opportunities in writing and illustration, hold workshops for students interested in writing, and inspire an entire generation to be lifelong readers and writers. We also have access to dedicated parent and community volunteers who would be excited to read with children from a variety of racially and ethnically diverse books throughout the month. It is my hope and expectation that we utilize next month's School Library Month observation as an opportunity to intentionally acknowledge and normalize the presence and experiences of our diverse student body. Thank you.
Janice Sullivan.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. McDade, and my fellow community. My name is Janice Sullivan, and my address is on file. I'm from the Coles District. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak in front of you. I'm a wife, a mother of two young boys on the autism spectrum, one nonverbal. I'm a family physician practicing in a local urgent care. I'm also current president of the Prince William County Special Education PTA, also known as P W C SEPTA. My main goals for speaking in front of you tonight are threefold and interrelated, so I'll get right into them. First, to emphasize the importance of accepting and embracing people with developmental disabilities in our communities. Developmental disabilities occur among all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups. Thank you for also including autism awareness and OT awareness as well. I will stress that they are all vitally important in building a community that is generally inclusive and equitable. A world-class education is not just about academics. Just like we have to model self-awareness, emotional intelligence, and appropriate behavior to our children and students, we have to choose and generally model inclusion. It is essential for our community, for the benefit of our future, for us, parents within our households, to increase our and our families' awareness of these disabilities and work towards accepting that no one mind or body is alike. And like what Temple Grandin said, all minds matter. I ask that we be humble and try to take another's perspective and appreciate that we can all benefit from accepting and embracing those people with developmental disabilities in our schools and communities. While neurotypical kids, parents are putting together playdates or taking their kids to sports practices, parents with kids with special needs are getting their kids to occupational therapy, speech therapy, ABA, doctor's appointments, stressing about IEP meetings. Oftentimes, they also have little time to address their own overall wellness. They've talked about commitment to innovators and problem solvers, and we need to embrace our differences, especially those seeing world through a different lens, recognizing that some of our own renowned innovators have also been on the autism spectrum, such as Albert Einstein, Temple Grandin, and Elon Mask, Elon Musk. Dr. McDade, you stated that it can be daunting task to navigate through resources, and all the more true for those parents who are taking care of kids other than IEP and 504 plan. My second goal is expressing for the gratitude for the comprehensive budget. Thank you for the increased special education teachers, assisted technology specialists, and increase in salaries. Please, other suggestions, please train parent liaisons to collaborate with P W C SEPTA. Consider a career exploration track for high school students interested in going into special education. Make available playground, inclusive playground equipment. And my third strong ask is to ask for compassionate leaders of our community to step up and keep P W C SEPTA going strong into near and years to come. We've done award ceremonies, teacher member grants, virtual support groups, and we want this to keep going, but I cannot continue to be president. I will leave with that we should stay valued and committed to core values of kindness, compassion, treating others according to the golden rule. So let's thrive together and stay community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandra Kern.
My name is Sandra Kern. My address is on file, and I'm a proud parent in the Potomac District. I'm also a sped mom. Thank you, Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade, and honorable members of the board, to allow me to speak. Tonight, I come before the board to bring forward my appreciation for recognition of March being Developmental, National Developmental Disabilities Month, 1405 on the agenda. Developmental disabilities are a group of conditions due to an impairment in the physical, learning, language, or behavior area. I have to reflect on that because it was 35 years ago, my senior year in a Prince William County school, that Developmental Disabilities Month was first recognized. Back then, I had no idea I would come before this board so many years later and just praise that it's such a vital and personal recognition for our children. Falling back on my sped mom status, I want to say, life happens. Some of us do not see through the eyes of a person with developmental disabilities. Just to make it clear, children and their families that have developmental disabilities want the equal playing field for the education and FAP, something that this board must deliver, even in your budget. A child with disabilities sometimes want to be recognized, not for the disability, but for their humanity. I encourage making friends with these students and finding compassion for some of the kindest, precious people in the community. Truth plus transparency is equalling trust. Three small steps that we can mean the world to our children and others. As always, I must include, because it's outside of the DD there, one in five children with dyslexia, and reading is a life skill. Now officially, two months being, now officially, this month being, two years from the beginning of the world pandemic and the trauma we have all suffered. Three words: I need help. They're some of the most difficult to say, and for a nonverbal, impossible. Children are suffering in plain sight. We have to have, we have some with resilience, others have succumbed to major learning losses. Social skills are also a focus. As being life learners, we must find the strong supports in their system, in our budget. Building the brighter future for our children is getting involved in the SEPTA, the PTA, advisory boards with our amazing teachers, which I see tonight, and making changes in the plans and policies that affect our children's futures. Parents, as partners, I stand here. Transportation, nutrition services, I also thank you for your keeping our kids moving and our bodies and minds, children thriving. One quote, "There's no greater disability in society than the inability to see a person as more." Robert Hensel. Good evening.
Thank you, Sandra. Ashley Berger. And Ashley Berger.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Berger. My address is on file. I'm currently a senior here at Osborne Park High School. I am here tonight to highlight a fundamental issue within the proposed budget for the year 2023. Simply put, there is not enough money being allocated towards mental health services. We do not have enough counselors, psychologists, therapists, or other resources to deal with the ever-growing number of students with mental health issues. There should be one counselor per 250 students and one psychologist per 500 students. P W C S does not meet these needs. There's also no full-time therapist at my school, and I know there is a lack of full-time therapists among other schools as well. Though there is 4.2 million being put towards lowering the ratio of assistant principals from 600 to 1 to 500 to 1, we need to lower the ratios of these critical positions for mental health services before we add assistant principals to schools. In the budget, under core values, the board takes responsibility for students' mental health. When I examine Commitment 1, which has 30.6 million in funds, there is only 1.3 million allocated to mental health, which is 4% of the funds. P W C S does not have a separate category for mental health either. However, Loudoun County has a category dedicated to student mental health support and 24/7 online therapy available and counseling specialists, according to their budget. Most of our funding goes to psychology stipends and very few programs. However, to my understanding, the school psychologists are responsible for testing and critical care, not everyday support. Under Commitment Number Two, Positive Climate and Culture, there is 16.8 million in funds. Of this, 8.9 million, which is 53% of the commitment's budget, is being put towards security and risk management. However, according to the N A S P research, security systems have been found to be ineffective in protecting students and associated with more school crime and disruption. Instead of placing funding towards this, reallocate this funding to the fundamental problem at hand, students' mental health. Students act out in all sorts of ways when coping with poor mental health. According to the ACMH, one in five children have a diagnosable emotional, behavioral, or mental health disorder, and 50 to 80% do not get the help that they need. I will note that there is $18,825 designated to Social Services Signs of Suicide Annual Subscription, which accounts for less than 0.01% of the funding. To put this into perspective, this is only 5% of the superintendent's salary. I would hate to suggest that the school board does not see this as a prominent issue. After all, according to the American Association of Suicidology in 2019, suicide was the second leading cause of death among the age group 15 to 24. The solution is to allocate a significantly greater amount of money towards mental health services. We need a lower ratio of students to counselors and psychologists. We need multiple permanent full-time therapists in each school. There will be detrimental consequences if this problem is not addressed. These consequences have already happened, and to my disappointment, there was nothing done. There was no change to follow to prevent another suicide. So I stand here before you today, asking you, begging you, please be the change. I'm not only advocating for myself, for my loved ones, for my school, but for all 90,000 students. So please stop focusing on your political career and start focusing on the kids. Thank you.
And remind the audience, if we can hold the applause and the cheering.
You want us to pause for adults?
John Han, Stephen Lorenz, Kenneth Nar, Carter Wiley, J. P. Raflo.
I'm not really sure how to follow that. Good evening, board members, Ms. McDade. Coming next month is Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm here to commend you all on the superb job of keeping your child abuse and neglect statistics so low. Unfortunately, as a parent of a student who has been abused and neglected at the hands of the Prince William County School System, I've learned through almost 100 hours of research at $74.13 an hour, how you keep those statistics so low. I'm a trained federal investigator who has been conducting both criminal and civil investigations for over 17 years. I've carried many titles: investigator, inspector, commander, special agent. You can call me any of those. All I ask is that you actually call me. The title that I prefer most is Dad. That's hands-down my favorite. On January 30th this year, I emailed Ms. Porter-Lucas about my child being abused and neglected in the Prince William County School. On January 31st, she responded confirming that my child was segregated, isolated, refused in-person learning, but she determined that no abuse or neglect occurred. I emailed her back, asking for a copy of her investigation under the FOIA Act of Virginia. She responded that there is no copy, or I'm sorry, she didn't respond, Tanisha Holland responded, that there is no copy of an investigation because an investigation wasn't conducted. Ms. Holland was nice enough to send a link to Virginia Code 63.21511, Section 3, that says that the Division, if, for investigations of child abuse and neglect, when the child is alleged to have been abused or neglected by a school employee, the Division Superintendent Designee, Director of Prince William County Schools Risk Management and Security Services, if there is no conflict of interest, shall participate in planning any investigation when the report names a school division employee as the alleged abuser-neglecter. Ms. McDade, again, I've been an investigator for a long time. There's two basic principles that exist. An allegation cannot be determined to be false without an investigation, which is why the law requires the investigation. And an investigation of this magnitude cannot be completed in one day, regardless of what your television says. Ms. Porter-Lucas, my employee, she falls under your direct supervision. This means that you either aren't doing your job as a supervisor, or you are, and you can't claim willful blindness to this matter. Having documented the derelictions of your duties and multiple violations of Virginia State Statute and Code and your own school board policies, I stand here before you tonight, this, as your employer, ready and willing to accept your verbal or written resignation because my child's safety means that much to me. To the board, you now all know what is going on. You all now know an investigation was neglected by state law.
Thank you, Mr. Han.
Do your job.
Stephen Lorenz.
Stephen Lorenz, from Gainesville District. I'd like to address what's a direct budget impact issue. The lack of developable land that remains in Prince William County. In particular, how the 10,000 acres in the data center overlay district is actually fictitious. One argument that we've heard over and over again is that no new land is needed for data centers, and that no new land is needed for anything, not for new housing, not for new commercial development, that there is plenty already allocated. However, development in this county is grinding to a halt. I've been in the county for five years. I run a small tech company. I've stayed very plugged into what available land and what commercial space is available. And it has really dried up totally over the last five years. There is no, and unfortunately, in particular, there's no land left in the data center overlay that can support, can support a data center campus. The 10,000 acres currently consist of data centers, land in the process of becoming data centers, small, a few small dispersed lots, a lot of resource protection area, streams and creeks and so forth, and existing businesses. Is the county going to replace Jiffy Loop Live, or UPS, the Amazon Prime Distribution Center, or hundreds of small and medium businesses, and command them to change their use? Most of the few hundred acres that are left in the overlay are scattered and suitable for small business fill-in only. This is a fundamental problem for the county. The county has great plans, high hopes, and is a wonderful place to live, but there is no funding stream to pay for it all. No funding for collective bargaining, for teachers, for police, or for firefighters. No path forward for improving the tax base, and therefore, school funding. As you all... As you all know, over half of the school budget comes directly from the county taxes, which are largely currently residential taxes on personal, and on people's personal property. Please support the Board of County Supervisors in their efforts to bring new development into Prince William County and therefore, directly change what's possible within the school districts. Thank you.
Kenneth Nar.
Good evening. Kenneth Nar from the Gainesville District. I'd like to start off by complimenting this board and Dr. McDade on putting together a proposed FY23 budget that aligns with the recently approved strategic plan and puts our students, teachers, and staff first. It takes on the challenges of providing a world-class education for the most diverse student population in the Commonwealth of Virginia head-on. You have consciously assumed risk when and where it makes the most sense while somewhat aggressively addressing the initiatives identified needing the most immediate attention. If anything, I would suggest you could and should have leaned even further into the two most pressing challenges. There is an educator shortage throughout the country. According to the new strategic plan, we are approximately 250 positions short of where we need to be to provide this world-class education to all of our students. Our pay scales across the board are average at best. Our teachers make roughly 7,000 less than teachers in Loudoun and Fairfax. With approximately 6,000 teachers in our schools, the proposed FY23 budget needs an additional $42 million above the 7% raise to be on par with our two neighboring counties. Like it or not, these are the two school systems we are competing with against to retain our current teachers and to recruit new teachers. Another way to look at this fiscal situation is that we have the second lowest per-student expenditures in all of Northern Virginia. We invest roughly 6,000 per student less per year than Loudoun and Fairfax. With current student populations around 90,000 students, our budget should be over $2 billion. As the 10th most diverse county in the entire nation, we have additional challenges to require our educators to be better prepared than other school districts. This fact adds to the demand of professional development requirements of our entire school staff. This area is identified in the strategic plan, but I would suggest it is significantly underfunded. Obviously, these are extraordinary numbers. My suggestion is we, as a community, and use the school board formally develop a 5- to 7-year supplemental plan, starting in FY23, to increase our county's commercial tax base to 35%. This would produce the needed funds and is exactly how Loudoun and Fairfax are supporting their higher pay scales and student investments. Thank you.
Carter Wiley.
Good evening. Carter Wiley, Gainesville. In late February this year, the Prince William County Planning Department announced its draft pathway to 2040 Plan, which is the blueprint for future growth and development. Part of this report addresses housing and the expectation of the number of new units that Prince William County plans to see over the next 20 years. The report indicates that the county has a shortfall of housing by around 19,000 units. Conservatively, this need represents 3,200 additional acres of land necessary to satisfy this anticipated growth. Where is the county going to find this acreage and at what cost to its citizenry? Currently, Prince William County is struggling to maintain its anemic 15% commercial tax base. With the anticipation of more houses, the commercial tax base is certain to fall. How can Prince William County alter the eroding commercial tax base when the market for land is void of opportunity? Data centers serve as industry sector that can change Prince William County's flailing commercial tax base. Data centers generate close to five times higher tax revenue than any other use in the county and without the impacts of new schools, roads, or government services. At this time, data center overlay offers no opportunity for additional data centers. Where is the county going to find more land to facilitate this thirsty data center demand? Where is the available power, fiber, and latency? The proposed submittal for the PW Digital Gateway provides Prince William County with a unique opportunity to facilitate data center demand, bolster its tax base, without desecrating other areas of the county with new transmission lines and needed infrastructure. Of the 2,133 acres under review, 1,600 acres are under contract for data centers. What more needs to be said for the county to take this course of action? I encourage all administrators, teachers, and parents to speak to the county supervisors about the need for a stronger commercial tax base and the promise the PW Digital Gateway holds to bolster the commercial tax base necessary to pay for competitive teacher pay and school funding. Thank you.
JP Rafflo. The next five will be Katie Murphy, Richard Jesse, Arlene Deveraux, Kimberly Stewart, and Vita Carroll. Katie Murphy.
My name is Katie Murphy, and I'm a resident of the Gainesville District. I'm here to talk about accountability. First, I'll address Ms. Makia Little. I'd like to hold her accountable for her conduct and words at the last school board meeting. She described my 13-year-old daughter's speech as facetious and disrespectful and asked what kind of citizens we're trying to create. My daughter was not facetious or flippant, and she was not disrespectful. She spoke about removing the mask mandate, a single issue. Her speech was factual and impactful. To answer your question about what kind of citizens we want to create, I'll loosely use your words. I'd like to create citizens who can critically examine structures and policies of our government. I'd like to create citizens who do research to support their claims, as my daughter did using the Virginia Department of Health's COVID-19 dashboard for Prince William County, still reporting zero deaths ages 0 to 17. I'd like to create citizens who are emboldened, brave, and impassioned to respectfully address a room full of adults in positions of authority and question their motives and decisions. I'd like to create citizens who offer to pray for those who they feel are wronging them. And I'd like to create citizens who know right from wrong and use sound judgment, unlike Makia Little did when she chose to attack a child. As for the school board, I'm lucky that I have the opportunity to speak tonight. The school board has opened minimal spots for citizens to speak and have limited us to three minutes per person. Whether or not we like this policy, we adhere to it. Each of you, as school board members, are also held to three minutes for your comment time. Unfortunately, some of you believe rules apply for thee but not to me. At the last meeting, Ms. Williams spoke for four minutes and 40 seconds and Ms. Jesse for five minutes and 16 seconds with no regard to the rules. Ms. Jackson failed to do her job of stopping the speakers at their three-minute mark. I sent an email on March 7th to every member of the board and Superintendent McDade, asking how they plan to ensure school board members adhere to rules. Nine days later, I'm still waiting on that response, and no, it's not in my junk folder. When looking through the agenda for items to speak on, I was at a loss. In the closed session, you all discussed the security of the Kelly Leadership Center and other school board facilities and property. That's been a point of contention brought up by many parents who showed up here at each meeting. Yet you choose to discuss this in a closed session rather than be transparent with us. Let me be clear. I support occupational therapy, physical fitness, school libraries, math and statistics, military children, autism awareness, developmental disabilities awareness, earthquake recognition, and child abuse prevention. That said, for nine out of the 11 agenda items to be focused on naming months as special interest months is weak. There are Google Calendar plugins for that. We want substance. We want real issues that are affecting our children to be on the agenda. We want to know what's being done in schools to protect our kids from the increasing number of physical fights. We want accountability.
Richard Jesse.
My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. I want to be clear that I really support the way that the Board of Supervisor has citizen time, and I think the way that the school board does it is a disservice to the citizens. I'd like to recommend, I think last week, or last meeting, you recommended that if three board members wanted something on the agenda, that they can have it on the agenda. I would like to hope that the board members would support looking at the changes to the way that you're currently doing citizen time and have a discussion for the public on any changes if you would so see fit. I had some recommendations, and I gave a copy to the clerks so you can see some of these recommendations. One recommendation, for example, is having citizen time in at 12 noon, only for the reason that many times, the agenda items are not fully filled up by speakers. So if you do something in at 12 noon, some of the other speakers who are on a waiting list can come and fill in the empty spots from the agenda items. Another thing is that I wish you would allow virtual speakers. One of the things I encourage people to come to the board meeting, but a lot of the citizens in the past did not want to come to the board meeting because there were too many people without masks and they didn't feel safe. But if there was a virtual option, they could come. And also, if you have a virtual option, I would wish that you allowed the citizens, if they want to use a camera to do so. If there's a speaker that needs an interpreter, they should be given more time, not only double the amount of time, but they should be given an extra minute or so. So, for example, instead of three minutes, I would recommend giving seven so that the interpreter can interact with the person and give them full credit for what they want to say. If you are going to stick to this total time, I would recommend at least going to two hours if needed instead of one hour, and that you have an incremental thing. For example, if you have one hour, keep to that. If you do 30 seconds, for example, right now, you have 20 speakers at three minutes. If you did two minutes 30 seconds, you could have 30 speakers. Thank you.
Ms. Arlene, I'm sorry, Ms., is it Arlene? Aline, Aline Deveraux.
Hello. I'm Aline Deveraux, a parent from the Gainesville District. I'd like to speak to you today about the weaponization and purposeful misinformation of certain concepts such as critical race theory, alleged divisive concepts, and equity. Now, let's be honest, people even you, we have the right to be racist, sexist, homophobic, xenophobic. We can teach that garbage to our children. It's not desirable. It's not ideal, but we do have that right. However, we do not have that right to bring those garbage ideas into our schools, our public school systems. We do not have the right to impede on any child's ability to have a safe, compassionate, inclusive, accurate, and world-class education, period. Now, I believe being a parent has been one of the greatest honors of my life as my child's first teacher and hopefully lifelong teacher, but I'm very clear, being a mother doesn't necessarily make me or anyone else a historian, a mathematician, a scientist, or an expert in educational policy and school curriculum. After all, a dog can have puppies. A dog is even a mother. But you become a historian, a scientist by careful study and training. Yet there is this new movement to encourage a subset of parents, particularly mothers, to fight and stand against our children because they don't fit the so-called preferred demographic. They falsely believe that these children, their stories and histories are less valuable because they claim it makes them feel uncomfortable. Well, it's okay to be uncomfortable. Do your homework, and welcome to adulting and parenting. All of our stories are part of the American history, and perhaps more importantly, they're part of our future, particularly in Prince William County, where we have the most diverse school district in the state and the 10th most diverse county in the nation. So this attack on equity and culturally responsive teaching is nonsense and should be a nonstarter in this community. Now, I realize a lot of this is rooted in power, fear, willful ignorance, and uncertainty. There are some people who are racist, and it is what it is. But others, they're just simply fearful because they don't know what to expect. They don't know, maybe they have not been exposed, or perhaps they have been accepted the entire truth. But you don't have to be in that space because there's many of us, and we're working on avenues to get us together, listen, strengthen our communities, and we can be an example of collaboration for our children to follow. So please stay tuned. But I would say to those that continue to spread lies and misinformation, I'll ask this question. I understand from a political and power perspective, but how do you reconcile this with your faith perspective? How do you reconcile your actions and rhetoric with our spiritual teachings? For example, in Christianity, Jesus was a homeless nomadic man. He ministered to the poor, the sick, the infirm, the forgotten, even the demon possessed. He offered the kingdom to the Jews and Gentile. How about that? Talk about equity. He didn't turn his back on others because they didn't fit a certain mold. He commanded us in John 13, 34, 35, "Love one another; as I have loved you, so you must love one another. By this everyone will know you are disciples if we love one another." So in closing, I would just say that there's many of us on each side, and we want to find our better selves, and we will do what's right. We have such a rich and vibrant community.
Ms. Deveraux, thank you very much.
And as long as we live in love and not fear, we will succeed. Because we, the peacemakers, we will be the light, the fire, that ignition that will launch us to a thriving future.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you.
Kimberly Stewart.
My name's Kimberly Stewart. The address is on file. Tonight, I want to celebrate and share with you and the community some of the amazing work and amazing teachers and staff we have in Prince William County, so I'll use my time to do that. I'd like to shout out to Reagan Middle School, PTSO, Teachers in Aben, that supported a dance last Friday and let kids be kids again. Special thanks to Ms. Marcel and Ms. Perez, who are the world's best kindergarten teachers. Shout out to my Mountain View coworkers. We absolutely love the BRES staff. Mrs. Cook is amazing, and from talks with my daughter, you can tell she adores her. Battlefield has the best Latin teacher. Both kids chose to do four years with her. Somehow, she makes it incredibly fun and engaging. Mrs. Arnold and Mrs. Ty Papa at Chris Young are two of our absolute favorite teachers. Ms. Miranda and Mrs. Walsh at Glenn Kirk Elementary have been so supportive of my kindergartner. All the teachers and staff at LV Elementary are amazing. We love the staff at Mount Clair Elementary. They love my kids so well and have for years. Mrs. Marshall and Mrs. Vanderdyke at TNS. Thank you to Dr. McClurg and Mrs. McDonald at Chris Young. Thank you to the sixth-grade staff at TNS for encouraging and supporting my son. My fifth grader wouldn't have survived virtual without Mrs. Warren and Mrs. Boyle at Cedar Point last year. They went above and beyond. Mrs. Perry, second grader at Buckland Mills Elementary, has been phenomenal in supporting my son. Haley Cameron is an awesome third-grade teacher at Graverly Elementary. Mrs. Abner, Ms. Collins, Mrs. Kittle, Mrs. Baker, and Mrs. Chase at Haymarket for being so incredibly wonderful and showing up even when it wasn't easy. Mr. Baldwin at HMS, HMES, is fantastic and cares about teachers and kiddos. Mrs. Toni Ann Harris from BMES and Mrs. Kristi Pregnall from HMES. Battlefield High School, Mrs. Hill and Mr. McMillan. The Graverly staff, and especially Mrs. Soblin and the teachers aides. Ms. LaShonda Black, Elizabeth Hoffman at Noakesville. Thank you to Melissa Goldman, geometry teacher at BHS, and Jamie Marsh, the reading specialist at BHS. Mrs. Ella Saucer, the AICE Classical Studies teacher, is the best. She keeps the class interesting. Ms. Henke, the orchestra teacher, who clearly enjoys the kids and is passionate. Mrs. Cassarino at Graverly Elementary is wonderful. Thank you to Mrs. Price, Mrs. Housinger at Battlefield, Ms. Weiss, and Mr. C. at our special ed teachers at TNS, and the most dedicated teachers, also Mr. Webster, the PE teacher at TNS. Mr. Suthers, a special ed teacher, and Ms. Cook for World History at BHS. Huge thank you to Mrs. Mays. Mr. Haley Cameron and Mrs. Michelle Frovel are amazing, and I'd give them the shirt off my back. We have incredible staff and teachers in PWCS, and if we want the best for our kids, we should always strive to celebrate and recognize the hard work of some of our best.
Vita Carroll, William Deutsch, Maggie Hansford are the next three. Ms. Carroll.
Vita Carroll, Gainesville District. I do live in this county, unlike some of the earlier speakers this evening. I'm a sped parent of a four-year-old who is a student in the system. I will be speaking on the Prince William Digital Gateway. This project is a proposed over 2,000-acre data center compound in Gainesville that will tear down home, erase farmland, bulldoze historic land, and replace it with millions of square feet of data center. What does this have to do with the school board, you may ask? Absolutely nothing. It's completely ridiculous I'm speaking to you on the subject tonight, and I'm embarrassed and apologetic to other parents for taking valuable time. However, last week, when Dr. Latif publicly endorsed this project in his role as school board chair, I felt the need to come and speak on this directly. I know you've heard a few others speak on data centers tonight, and they each failed to disclose that every single one of them is financially invested and stands to make millions of dollars if this project passes. I am not financially invested. I am not an elected official and don't have to balance interest of donors. I don't live near the property, but I am opposed to it. Let's talk about tax revenue. Of course, it will bring in money, but the numbers spouted by supporters are inaccurate. The county's finance department determines advertised revenues are overinflated by 75%. There are several caveats making it highly optimistic, and the number now is based on full build-out. That's in 40 years. It's not coming next year. This money's not coming next year, y'all. Look at Loudoun County, often used as an example of a data center haven and an excellent school system. However, in the past year, Loudoun- However, in the past year, Loudoun has pumped the brakes on expanding data centers into the suburban rural transition areas. Staff was quoted as saying, "Data centers have been proven to be an unstable revenue source." And they should know because just last fiscal year, their budget was about 10% short of projections with a deficit of $60 million from data centers. One of their county supervisors stated, quote, "We worked really hard to accurately predict our data center revenue and use it, only to find ourselves in a position where we ended up overestimating." Shortfalls are likely due to technology depreciating quickly, which raises another concern. Are these buildings even going to be relevant in 10 or 15 years, or will they be obsolete reminders of poor decision-making by our county leaders? I care deeply about what this school system look like. I will have a school-aged child for the next 17 years, at least. But let's learn from Loudoun. Let's smartly diversify our industrial revenue so we don't, so we do have increased funding for our schools. Let's increase our data center industry tax to compete with Loudoun, which will double our current data center revenue immediately, not with a 20-year build-out, but next fiscal year. Let's teach our children how to respect our earth by preserving rural and historic areas. And most of all, let's keep our local school board out of politics. Dr. Latif, do not abuse the role you were elected into by going beyond the scope of your job description. Do not inappropriately politicize this board by endorsing widely unpopular and highly controversial dead-end projects. I will not be back to speak on this subject. I will not take away from parent time. This is not a subject for the school board and I ask that, Mr. Latif, Dr. Latif, you talk to the gentlemen who have convinced you to hitch your wagon to this and encourage them to stop taking up valuable parent time as well.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. Mr. William Deutsch.
Good luck for the kids, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Member of the Board. I'm here to speak about the night and day change that we've seen with citizen comment time over the last number of years. Back in the last board's term, this board had a policy that it didn't matter what your opinion was, we supported your right to speak. What happened this September, though, was the diametric opposite. Now, instead of discussing citizen comment time under the discussion of citizen comment time, we discuss it under security procedures for the Kelly Leadership Center. When I arrived here in September for a board meeting, it was clear that this board had changed its perspective of how they viewed parents from collaborators to the enemy. I counted 14 security guards and multiple checkpoints because this board does not want to hear from the public anymore. And quite frankly, it was shocking. But every name that I've heard used to justify these atrocious acts on parents is something that happened before, right? We heard parents called rabble-rousers. We've had parents accused, oh, you're taking up time talking repeatedly about issues. Maybe you're talking about issues that shouldn't be brought up before this board, right? Look, under the last board, I had somebody sitting in the front row heckling me. That was fine. Nobody on the board did anything about it, right? Under the last board, there was somebody who came from Maryland to speak on a school naming, couldn't remember the name of the school, of the person he wanted to name it to, right? We had people who spoke repeatedly to issues that maybe they were personnel items, maybe they were issues that generally the board didn't address. But you know, they spoke up and they gave their mind, and that's good. That should be encouraged. But what we've seen is the opposite. Citizen comment time has been limited, and now we have security guards ready to jump down anybody who disagrees with this board, right? We've seen altercations at the front door because of arbitrary policies here in this room for how many people can be here. And every time we ask about constantly changing policies, they always say, "The board created these policies." Well, guess what? We can't find these policies anywhere. But let's also talk about the fact that this board arbitrarily enforces all of their rules, right? If I go over my three minutes, I'll get gavelled out of line. If other board members go over their three minutes, they don't get gavelled out of line, right? The chairman went ahead and the first number of people today who were applauded for, nobody was gavelled. When somebody was applauded who criticized the board, they were gavelled, right? I came to an ARPA meeting in the summer and the sitting then vice chairman at the time was speaking to the issue about mitigation measures, masks, et cetera. Somebody came up and spoke against masks. He was gavelled out of line because masks apparently weren't something you could speak about. Look, the rules have been arbitrary and they've been focused on silencing dissent from this board and it's wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Maggie Hansford, and then after that will be Brandy Provenzano, Stephanie Evers, Tammy Fick.
Good evening, Dr. McDade, Chair Latif, board members. My name is Maggie Hansford and my address is on file. I'm a proud parent of three students in our school division, a speech pathologist by trade, and the president of the Prince William Education Association. For the first time in history, public school educators in the Commonwealth of Virginia have the opportunity to pursue a collective bargaining agreement with the school division. As of May 1, 2021, Virginia localities may pass a resolution which allows for the recognition of employee associations as the exclusive bargaining representatives for certain segments of their workforces and collective bargaining with such exclusive representatives. As of today, March 16, Prince William County Public Schools has not passed a resolution authorizing exclusive bargaining agents and/or collective bargaining. PWEA has obtained the signatures of a majority of employees who support collective bargaining based on skills, training, compensation, functions, work locations, benefits, and job duties. Given that Prince William County Public Schools has not adopted a collective bargaining resolution, the self-determined bargaining unit would like to provide certification that the majority of the unit desires to be represented by an employee association. Per Virginia code, this certification of the bargaining unit triggers the requirement that the locality take a vote to adopt or not adopt a collective bargaining resolution within 120 days. Employees look forward to working with you to establish an environment that best promotes student growth, staff success, and community engagement. Collective bargaining will not only help us recruit new teachers and staff, it will also help us retain our veterans, veteran staff. I would like to acknowledge and thank you all for your generosity in this year's budget. We all know that in order to recruit and retrain the very best employees for our students, we need to compensate them fairly. Our educators, our bus drivers, custodians, librarians, special education assistants, itinerants, social workers, school psychologists, nurses, secretaries, and every Prince William County school staff member support our students to thrive and reach their full potential. We are so proud to stand before you tonight and before you, Dr. McDade, in this historical partnership that we will benefit, it will benefit all parties. We also want to thank our parents and families who have shown us their unwavering support as we continue to work together. Thank you so much.
Brandy Provenzano, please hold your applause, folks.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Latif and Dr. McDade. My name is Brandy Provenzano and my address is on file. Tonight, I want to thank this board in advance for recognizing the hard work that educators and staff members have accomplished to collect signatures in support of collective bargaining. As you can imagine, this was no easy task. However, we work together because we all believe in the benefits of working with the division to ensure that student and staff needs are met. We understand that collective bargaining is not just about compensation. It's about identifying the needs of students and staff members and ensuring that they have a voice to communicate those needs. We also recognize that as other surrounding divisions begin to craft their collective bargaining resolutions, we can lead by example. Your support of collective bargaining tonight will be heard across the state. Once again, Prince William County schools will have the opportunity to show support of our staff and our students, and we want to retain and recruit the best because our students and their families deserve nothing less. We are so proud to stand before this board tonight and before you, Dr. McDade, in a partnership that will benefit all parties. We also want to thank all the parents here and all the parents who have shown unwavering support as we continue to work together. Thank you.
Stephanie Evers.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade. My name is Stephanie Evers and my address is on file. Tonight, I want to thank this board in advance for recognizing the hard work that educators and staff members have accomplished to collect signatures for collective bargaining. As a veteran teacher in this county, I worked on this campaign because I recognize the value of having experienced educators in the classroom. We're always excited to recruit young college graduates so eager to implement everything they learned in college. They bring new energy to the table, a fresh perspective, and a heart full of hope. However, as we all know, college prepares us for many things, but it does not prepare us for the real, authentic work that it takes to become an expert in our field. The only thing that does that is experience, reflection, and growth. Veteran educators play a critical role in helping our new teachers transition from the world of academia to the world of building relationships with students and families. We are there to offer resources, best practices, and most of all, we're there to support them on their journey. However, veteran educators are often forgotten and their experience and expertise are overlooked. We need to protect this valuable resource and that is why I encourage you to vote in support of collective bargaining. Show your veteran educators, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, secretaries, and all other Prince William County school employees that you don't just say that you support them, you vote for and implement policies that show your commitment to them. We are so proud to stand before this board tonight and before you, Dr. McDade, in a partnership that will benefit all parties. We also want to thank our parents and families who have shown us their unwavering support as we continue to work together. Thank you.
Tammy Fick.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Latif and Dr. McDade. My name is Tammy Fick. I'm with the Brentsville District and my address is on file. Tonight, I want to join my colleagues to thank this board in advance for recognizing the hard work that we as educators and staff members have accomplished to collect all of these signatures for collective bargaining. Tonight, I want to stand before you in support of the teacher assistants without whom I would not be able to survive my day in my special ed class at work. Every teacher that has a TA in their classroom will tell you how invaluable they are for student success and teacher success. Our TAs provide extra support, additional instruction, small group instruction, behavior support, and so much more. They are the ones we work with daily and trust to share the responsibility of educating the children in our schools. Our TAs truly are outstanding. I know that you believe this too, so please show them that you support a livable wage and a clear pathway to retirement for them. Show them that you see them and you recognize their role in our thriving education program. If a teacher's assistant can leave us and make more as a Walmart greeter with less responsibilities than that of an educator, how valued can they really feel? They stay for the kids, but they leave because they must pay their bills. I stand with my colleagues to say that we are so proud to stand before you tonight and before you, Dr. McDade, in this partnership that will benefit all parties, including our TAs, with collective bargaining. We also want to thank our parents and families who have shown us their unwavering support as we continue to work together. Thank you.
That concludes citizen comment time. We're moving on now to student representative matters and we have Danya Sharifi, our student representative from the Gainesville High School, junior there to join us this evening. Danya.
Good evening to the Prince William County community, school board members, Dr. and Dr. McDade. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Happy Women's Month to all those hardworking women here on the school board, Dr. McDade, our super, our representative supervisor, Ms. Viola, the student senate, and other student representatives. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to work alongside such empowering woman. I also want to say a quick congrats to May and Samantha who were introduced during the recognition for the women wrestling championships. Thank you for representing those female athletes, breaking boundaries, and proving that certain sports like wrestling are not just for boys and representing Prince William County. Congratulations. I would also like to speak on an agenda item today regarding Earth Week. In the Earth Week resolution, it is said that Prince William County School Board and Superintendent proclaim April 18 to 22 as Earth Week to encourage all students and staff to participate in activities that promote environmental stewardship throughout this week, as well as reflect ways to contribute to a healthier planet throughout the years. A Canvas module has been developed to promote this resolution as a type of research page with multiple activity suggestions for Earth Week. So, thank you to the Sustainability Office for getting that together as a great resource for both teachers and students. The Canvas module will be released in the week of March 28, and the module has over 25 lessons, K-12 activities, and questions for student reflection. This is based on our annual Earth Week calendar of events, which is based on the PWCS website. The reps and I intend on connecting with teachers, SCA, and environmental clubs at each school to promote sustainable practices and awareness during that week that will hopefully translate throughout the entire year. Sustainability practices are habits that must be learned, and the best age to learn habits is when you are younger, so we'll be focusing heavily on elementary school and middle school students for these activities. For the upcoming library month, as declared by Prince William County to be in the month of April, I want to give a shout out to all those librarians in Prince William County, and I especially want to shout out Mrs. Crookton, Gainesville High School, my school's librarian, because she's honestly one of the most genuine, genuine and kind-hearted individuals at school. She promotes an environment in the library that students love to go to the library, not only to study or socialize, but to participate in several activities. We've had blind book datings during Valentine's where the books were wrapped so we wouldn't know what book we would get, and then we've even had a red cart with several books with red covers when Taylor Swift dropped her Red album. The little things that every librarian does does not go unnoticed, and I commend all librarians across Prince William County schools. I would also like to add that I agree that both in school libraries and school book fierce, books with more representation need to be available, and I hope we can allocate funding toward the purchase of those books representation and books written in other languages. Thank you. And next on to student representative updates on school start times. We've developed a draft of a survey and had had several meetings with Dr. Neal on the approach we are going to take, and we intend on releasing the survey and gathering, analyzing data, and presenting it to the board ends of April, early May. And then I would like to share just a couple of statistics that shows why this later start time is essential. So, when a child goes through puberty, their, uh, puberty, their sleep cycles lengthen and also decreases sensitivity to light in the morning. The sleep cycle is called the circadian rhythm and helps our minds and bodies maintain an internal cycle that tells us what time to eat, sleep, rest, and work. However, when teens go through puberty, their cycle changes and their circadian rhythm is turned, thrown off. These changes causes teens to sleep later at night and wake later each morning. The early school start time forces students to get up earlier than they should, disrupting their sleep cycle. It's rare for teens to get eight to 10 hours of recommended sleep, and when it's told to students that they're supposed to get eight to 10 hours of sleep, half of them are in shock and the other half is aware but have accepted that there's no possibility of them getting that much sleep, so they ignore it. It is important to understand that if a high school student wants to go on the bus at 6:30 but typically sleeps at 11 or 12 at night due to school activities, sports, or homework, they hardly will get six to seven hours of sleep. That's barely scratching the minimum of eight hours. Lack of sleep has several issues that I won't list off because it's an infinite list. The CDC's surveys teens across the US and show that only 25% of high school-age adolescents reported sleeping the minimum eight hours of sleep each night. And without this amount of sleep, growing bodies aren't able to reach maximum function abilities each day. To solve this, the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that high school begins no later than 8:30, and even the governor at California passed Senate Bill 328, which does not allow high school start times to start before 8:30. We hope that Prince William County will implement a later start time similar to that of California and a lot of our neighboring counties in order to promote more sleep among students. The survey we are sending out will help us understand both students, teachers, and parents' perspective on this change, which hence we are having to have a separate survey for students, parents, and teachers. That's all for tonight and thank you so much. Make sure to stay posted and engaged in our PWCS community by following us on Twitter at PWCS Raps. Also, if you're a student involved in SCA or other student leadership clubs, we are planning our leadership conference for this year, so be sure to look forward to that soon. We also like any photos from school sporting events to musicals to send us to weekend repots. We want to see all the stuff going on in Prince William County's channel through our page, so be sure to share any photos or upcoming events with us through Twitter or email. Lastly, I would like to let students know that the student rep application for next year is running until the end of the month, so be sure to look for that. Thank you, everyone, and have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, Danya. All right, I actually went out of order. You were not supposed to be next, but we'll go back to 1601, which is the fiscal year 2023 budget and capital improvement plan approval. It's on for action. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve, one, approve their fiscal year 2023. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve, one, approve their fiscal year 2023 CIP and the fiscal year 2023 school budget in the total amount $1,865,25,383. And further, two, approve the revenue sharing agreement between the Prince William Board of County Supervisors and the Prince William County School Board that provides 57.23% of general county revenues be transferred to the school division for the operations of fiscal year 2023. And further, three, direct the superintendent to forward the request of the school budget by fund totals to the Prince William County Board of County Supervisors. And further, four, request the Prince William County Board of County Supervisors to approve and appropriate their fiscal year 2023 school budget by lump sum appropriation in the amount of $1,865,25,383 by fund totals as in previous years.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Aragpor, seconds of motion. Okay, discussion. Who'd like to go first? Anybody like to go? Okay, well, how about I'll, Ms. Wall, and then I'll go next.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Couple of guiding principles on the budget. I've taken a lot of time to review it in detail, and a couple of guiding principles that I have in my own personal decision-making process. One is the need to invest in student achievement and in the classroom in particular. Two is the need to improve our market competitiveness for attracting and retaining the best employees that we can. And three is ensuring fiscal responsibility and careful management of our resources so that we may get the best return on investment and put hard-earned tax dollars to their best use for the sake of our children. So, in my opinion, this budget does all three of those. Item one, I'm particularly happy to see the expansion of gifted education and the career and technical education programs, shoring up of special education resources for students, and supporting English language learners. On my item two, the proposed raise for teachers and staff better positions us to be competitive in the marketplace for top talent, and that is really important for the health of our school division. My expectation is that this proposed budget will increase our competitive edge, and this in turn should directly benefit our students because if we can keep our best teachers, we have continuity in the classroom and in our programs. So, I expect we will be gathering data on our success to track our investments and make sure adjustments is necessary. On item three, I want to spend just a little bit of time on this, my third item, I should say. We must remember that we're talking about a very large amount of money, $1.5 billion. Every dollar represents taxpayer sacrifice. It's a trust. It's an investment in education, and we must always keep in mind whose money that is. It's the public's money, and we use it as wise stewards. And so, we should guard against waste at every turn. We should maintain vigilant adherence to sound principles of solid fiscal management. And we need to set aside ample reserves for hard times. We're in hard times right now, and we don't know the future. We don't know what's going to happen in the marketplace. We don't know what's going to happen in the world. The political world is very, very precarious right now. And, you know, as just a reminder, and as we look at this budget, I think we do have some things in place that we have, that we've set money aside. We've been very strategic in not investing any ESER funds or any coronavirus, you know, federal relief funds for things that couldn't be a one-time expenditure. So, there are a number of things that I think we've done that position us to be well situated to weather a storm, but I think it's really important that we do this. Traditionally, in Prince William County, we've done very well with fewer dollars. I think it's indisputable that we generate a solid return on investment at a lower cost than our neighbors, and so I think that's to be highlighted and commended. But, and we also almost also must remember that throwing money at problems and hoping that something sticks is not good fiscal management, rather, successful lie in making sure that money is being spent wisely in pursuit of purposeful priorities, which is why I commend the Division for its strategic plan. And its purposeful planning with this budget, the close tying of those two things together, I think is awesome. I think that takes commitment. We have a commitment to accountability and transparency moving forward, so I look forward to that. When, here in Prince William County, our students achieve comparably with our bigger, more wealthy neighbors despite traditionally being outfunded and not having the same amount of resources. I think we should be proud of that. I think we should build on that strength and recognize the things that we're doing well that don't have necessarily a big fiscal price tag. And then, moving forward, however, I do see that we do have investments that we need to make in key areas, not only to promote additional student success, but to reduce organizational risk and assure compliance with federal and state laws and regulations, and that is very important for us to recognize. I think that budget, this budget prioritizes that. I think that's important, that we need to recognize that, recognize those risks and take measures to mitigate against them. So, above all, we must deliver on our mandate to educate the children of Prince William County, position them to graduate, ready to move into successful, productive lives as fully contributing members of our community. I think this budget makes great strides toward that goal. And I'll end my comments by reiterating the last point, which is consciously, we need to consciously remember where these funds come from and to whom we are responsible, and that we continue our efforts to be transparent and accountable to the public for the use of these funds for the benefit of all students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Aragpor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Wall, you actually covered a couple of things that I wanted to talk about, but I'm just going to expand on one of the thoughts. When we are investing in our employees, it's, we don't want a revolving door of employees. It costs money to train people. It takes a few years for teachers, new teachers to, they need mentors. They need compassionate people in their lives who are helping them do the best job they can when they're starting off. It's been really hard through this pandemic as well. So, all school divisions right now are facing issues with people maybe deciding to move out of the teaching profession. And so, to remain competitive, we do have to do something about raising our salary. But it also, it is just, it's good fiscal responsibility to make sure that we aren't having a revolving door because we aren't paying our people enough. So, I'd like to point that out. I agree with all those things that you were talking about. I'm particularly excited about the investment in our children and special education, gifted education. And I know we've got parent liaisons. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it's going to make a big difference to our communities because we know parent involvement is the number one thing that helps our schools and communities. And I want to remind parents too that please take advantage of all of the opportunities you have. We already know that our sports parents are doing the boosters, and our music parents, and our theater parents. You have that side of life. We have the PTSOs. We have all of these opportunities to sit on committees and things like that. So, please stay involved and engaged because that's just going to make everything so much better. I'm also excited about, I'm going to have a grandson in about a month, and when he turns five years old, he will be in kindergarten in one of our Prince William County schools, and he will have a TA in his kindergarten classroom. One of the best kindergarten teachers that my kids ever ran across at Marshall Elementary always talks about her TAs are her team. And just, she's an amazing teacher, Ms. Stamp, Ms. Stamp, hello, Ms. Stamp. But she always talks about her team. We want every teacher to have a team. So, this is investing directly into our staff and into our students, making our school division even better. And this whole idea that we've been able to run on a tight budget, it's great, but I don't want people to be exhausted over it either. There's people in the Kelly Center who are taking on a lot of work. Investing a little bit more staffing in the Kelly Center is going to be better for all of our employees. So, as we move forward through this budget session, I'm just thrilled with everything, how it aligns with the strategic plan, yes. And I specifically, one of the reasons I ran for school board was because I know that the strategic plan is the thing that guides us. And if we aren't, if some education teachers are evaluated on something called a SMART goal, I wanted to SMART goal the division, and that's basically what we're doing. It's accountability and it's checking as we go to make sure that we are doing the job we said we're going to do. So, I am excited about all this. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have stated that a crucial difference between the budgetary process this year and previous years is the detailed alignment in these budgetary positions with our strategic plan. For example, many of you who follow budget sessions in the previous years will remember that I was one of the only board members who proposed cutting a number of central office staffing positions provided at the recommendation of Dr. Walz. Well, this year, every new position added to our operating budget is not only aligned to this strategic plan, but Dr. McDade's team gave me a detailed explanation as to how each of these positions will benefit the overall goal of teaching and learning for our students. The details provided by our superintendent go way beyond waving a WAB report and telling me that we do not have enough central office positions as compared to other jurisdictions. I understand the budget because the positions are aligned again with the framework of our strategic plan. Thanks to the alignment of our plan, I'm not only able to see how this is a holistic view of our division, but how some of these positions specifically will help the Potomac District. As outlined in our strategic plan, everything we include in our budget would help the mission and the goal of developing our profile of a Prince William County graduate. Today and in previous years, my goal has been to support the fiscal responsibility and serve as a voice for the Potomac District. As a representative of Potomac, my view as a board member is that I must be engaged. I must be responsive, and I must be present in my 14 schools. When I come to budget work sessions and improve our operating budget, I use this mindset when advocating for resources and projects in my schools. Now, let's talk about some of the core values of our strategic plan. Let us talk about equity within the Potomac District and do a deeper dive in how it benefits my constituents. Equity is not about providing every kid with a pair of shoes. It's about providing kids with shoes that fit. Over the past four years, I have tried, for example, to move the fenestration and renovation projects at Graham Park forward an additional year. Although these attempts have been unsuccessful, I'm now happy to see that, starting this summer, Graham Park's fenestration project and HVAC will be coming to their building. Yes, I know, we have quite a contrast in the Potomac District. A number of my students go to the state-of-the-art and the only middle school that looks like Potomac Shore's Middle School in the county. But we must keep in mind the conditions of our older buildings, like Graham Park Middle School. When it comes to community resources and being responsive to the needs of my constituents, using Forest Park, for example, last spring, I was made aware by a Potomac local article about the dilapidated conditions about the tennis courts at Forest Park High School. Immediately, I jumped to action. I talked to staff and started thinking of a way of handling this project. As the tennis coach told me at Forest Park, no previous board member had ever come out and walked the tennis courts with her and was so responsive to the needs of her students. The same goes for my other high school and securing a new track for Potomac High School. But equity goes beyond the exteriors of our schools and specific facility projects. School programs within buildings also must stress the equitable needs of their learning populations. In this budget, take Dumfries Elementary, for example, a small building with a small student population, where many of these students come from poverty and households where either both parents work multiple jobs or a single parent is supporting the entire family. These low student numbers do not lead to a full-time ITC, and the principal has to use federal grant dollars to pay for a community liaison. Dumfries does not have a population where the PTCO can raise thousands of dollars from events. However, with this budget, Dumfries will have the ability to hire a full-time ITC. They will be able to make a community liaison position sustainable even when the grant money runs out. They will be able to leverage additional small school funding to hire curriculum support specialists because the students of Dumfries deserve the opportunity to compete with students from more affluent populations. If you look at inclusivity and supporting the health and wellness, it is not coincidental that Forest Park High School is one of the only two high schools open to the public. This goes back to a couple of years ago when an advocacy group called Run Free Prince Williams talked to me and another school board member about the need to open these tracks to the public. I'm proud that the Potomac District offers this opportunity for residents and constituents. As some speakers have said, resiliency and the well-being of students are paramount, and they are apparent in this budget with the 13 additional college and career readiness counselors. Last year, I did try cutting a million dollars worth of textbooks to add 12 additional counselors to the school reduced caseloads, but I'm happy to see that this budget includes our goal and continue our success in cutting counselor caseloads. Over the past couple of years, this board has expanded support for the whole child by adding social workers, psychologists, counselors, and other programs to support the resiliency and well-being of our students. Yet, we need to continue adding more counselors to meet the ASCA recommendation of 250 to 1 ratio. April is Military Child Awareness Month, and anyone who follows the budget process each year knows that I've continually advocated for a full-time military family transition coordinator. In the past, fortunately, federal grants helped sustain half of this position's funding. However, next year, that federal funding is gone, but I'm happy to see that this budget does support that full-time position. This position is critical to the Potomac District that may have the most military family populations in our county. For the past six years, I've had the pleasure of serving on our Division Safe School Committee. One of my last projects at the committee was working with our principals, admin, and parents to bring back groups like our watchdogs and create unique solutions like other national programs like Dads on Duty. The safety and well-being of our students has been an utmost priority of mine, and again, this budget keeps that in mind by adding additional security school specialists to our secondary schools and additional funds to hire more APs to support building discipline and safety. Finally, and most importantly, as a fellow special needs parent, I am honored when families come and ask me advice or even ask me to participate in an IEP meeting. Unfortunately, because of conflicts and injuries, I cannot attend these, but I appreciate that families know that I am one of the voices on our board that represents the special needs families. I get what special needs families face during COVID-19. My nine-year-old son Dominic struggled during this time because he could not learn virtually, and he needed to be back in school. We saw major regression, which we're still working on today as a family. Our budget is historic because it nearly doubles the number of positions in our special education department. Yes, a number of these positions are going to be based at this leadership center. Most of these positions will be individuals who serve in the field and support our special ed teachers. I will add that as a board, we need to keep moving forward and add additional TAs in our autism and ID classrooms. In closing, I want to say that I spend many weeknights and weekends working throughout the Potomac District and listening to families and getting their feedback and concerns. Most recently, for example, parents at the Ashland PTCO contacted me about the lack of communication between bus drivers who accept new routes when they take routes for their apps and colleagues. Often, the bus app does not reflect this accurate timing. However, this budget includes additional positions so we can do our best to address communication and combat the national bus driver shortage. Hearing stories like this with busing or feedback regarding school safety is a reason why I will continue to be engaged, responsive, and present in my schools. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
I agree with everything he said. That was a very comprehensive review, but the first thing he indicated in his remarks was this alignment. And one of the commitments from the superintendent was organizational coherence. And I want to speak to that because I think that when you see us in the boardroom, if you haven't noticed that there's a difference in this boardroom, I have because I've been here for a long time. And the budget process was always a very difficult process. We would spend hours in markup. I think maybe four hours, five, I don't know. But I think we spent an hour in markup because the superintendent and her staff really have provided us with information in advance. And I want to commend her for that because it made the process easier. For example, she provided us with a form, and we filled out the form. Instead of writing everything we could think of, she gave us a form. We wrote, we put our information on that form, our requests, and then she asked a very important question at the end. Or was it Mr. Wall if it, I'm not sure which one of you did this, but it was a very good question. The question was, if you don't get this, if you want this, and we don't have it in the budget, what are you willing to give up? And it forced us to think, what is it that we're willing to give up? I have always looked at student achievement. I have always looked at student achievement as number one, and that's in this budget. And I'm not going to outline all the different positions because I think, I honestly think that Justin did a very good job of outlining everything that's in this budget. But she also gave us a response, and we got these little forms with green and white forms. I had seven or so items in my budget that I wanted, and not only did she respond to say, no, you can't have it, in a very nice way, I must say, or maybe you can have it, and here's what we're going to do. For example, one of the items that's really important to me, and it's interesting because I am a K3 reading person, and I believe that that beginning reading literacy piece is very important. Someone talked about literacy earlier. But as I look at our graduation rates and I look at the disparity between the reading performance and the graduation rate, 95% of kids are graduating, all these 95, 90% graduation rates, and I'm wondering what's going to happen after college. And I think literacy is really important, so literacy in the content area was an area that is very important to me. So she did, Mr. Walliford and the superintendent and her staff did say that they're going to look at it next year. The other item is equity. And I like that analogy, the shoes and, boy, you're on it tonight.
I am.
Yes, thank you, thank you. He was so good, but it is very true. So when I looked at the data, there's a disparity in our performance. We're concerned about math. We've talked about math a great deal, but I looked at the science scores, and I was concerned that our science scores are even lower and that we needed to really look at those scores. So for me, I've been in this county long enough to know that we had to bring people in this boardroom for Woodbridge High School to get a feel after 45 years. We don't really need to do that anymore, but I am looking at what it is that we need to have to get equity. Equity informs, when I asked for a report, when I first came on this board, I walked, I visited so many schools, and I realized there were 14 trails in some and bathrooms outside, and there was an equity issue. But I also asked this time for a report on the science labs, and it looks like there are 20 science labs that are missing in schools, and they're all Title I schools. So when we talk about whether or not kids have equitable, I'm not sure, I think that falls on the equality, it's a lack of equality. But she has looked at that, and I know that there are some considerations about physical space, having a space to really build a lab, but she has also said she is going to be working with another agency to provide some support for those schools that do not have labs in our Title I districts, and she is going to look at the physical space down the road. So I just wanted to commend the superintendent and her staff for providing us with opportunity for input, and I say this again, that each, I think it's Friday, I have another two-by-one meeting, briefing meeting. I think we meet with her so frequently, I can't keep up with the meetings. My husband said, don't you have a briefing meeting today? I said, no, I don't have a briefing meeting. Had to look at my calendar because we are briefed all the time. I just want to commend the superintendent and her staff for allowing us to have input and not to, I use the word fight out loud, that we don't have to fight out loud. So I want to thank you, and I think this budget is the best budget I've seen since I've been here. I'm very, very impressed. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start by saying I appreciate and support this budget that the superintendent and her staff have put together. I think that if we don't recognize anything else, it's that for an administration that's been in place since July 1, has clearly taken the time to not only listen to the board, our employees, but members of the public, and then translate that into this budget and our strategic plan. And I can't tell you how much I value the alignment between the strategic plan and the budget because the strategic plan is our roadmap for how we're going to lead the division. The budget is how we're going to fund those priorities. You can't, you shouldn't have one without the other, and I think this has been the best example of that since I've sat on this board. I do want to, if Mr. Wallingford will indulge me because you say it so much better than I ever could, I ask this every budget season and every time we talk about the budget because I think we don't talk about it enough. And I remember prior to being a board member thinking, that's a really large number for a school division, and that's a lot of money. And hearing members of the public go, well, we need to spend money in the classroom, and we need to do this, and we need to do that, and I think on top of all of those regular questions, the pandemic has brought on a new set of questions. So, Mr. Wallingford, if you wouldn't mind just doing the usual for me on behalf of me and all of the watching public, and simply explain the difference between our operational budget and our pandemic funds, and why members of the public may not see them, and why we cannot use them in our operational budget for ongoing items.
So, Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. McTade. Mrs. Williams, thank you for the question. The budget that's before you tonight for adoption is the operating fund and other funds budgets of about $1.8 billion. The general fund budget is about $1.528 billion, and that does not include, like you say, that does not include about $200 to $220 million that we've received over the past year and a half to two years in funding from the federal government for the pandemic through SER I, SER II, and SER III. There is about 100 to 120, I was going to say billion, 100 to 120 million of those dollars left to spend. And again, they're not part of this budget. Those were added during the year and each of the last two years and are part of our carryforward process that takes place at the end of the fiscal year each year.
And with those funds, Mr. Wallingford, when I'm talking about pandemic relief funds, can we just spend them any, all kind of way? Could we throw them in our operational budget and, like, just buy whatever we feel is needed just because we have those funds?
No, absolutely not. The pandemic funds are really to provide two or three things. One is mitigation for the pandemic through PPE and other mitigation strategies. The other, more important frankly, issue is unfinished learning and trying to recover from a year and a half to two years of learning remotely and for some period missed in the classroom altogether. So we try to focus those dollars on those issues. It appears that we're coming out of the pandemic finally, but there's still, there's still a great deal of work to do with regard to unfinished learning.
Thank you, Mr. Walliford. I think that's important to note at this time because, you know, budgets have always been complicated for me. I'm sure a lot of other people share that sentiments, and I think anything that we can do to further educate the public and ourselves about the different categories of money and how we spend them and why it's important, I appreciate greatly. I don't want to keep you up at the stand. I think that's my main point. I bring that up because it's important, we know this year that there's still uncertainty from our state general assembly as to how much money we're going to get from them for funding because they haven't figured it out yet. Often, the school division has, well, every year we go before the Board of County Supervisors with our revenue sharing agreement and explain to them why we need funding, and I think this year even more so, it's important that the public understand that those funds don't operate our school division every year on a continuous basis. And our school division is growing. One of the things I meant to ask, Mr. Wallingford, but I think I got this myself, is we continue to grow as a school division, not only in number and size, but in the types of students that we have. And the different categories of students also mean that we have to spend more money. Oftentimes, our ESAL students or our at-risk students, we have to allot more dollar value to them to provide them an equitable education as well, and I think that that's also important, especially in a time when we know some of our student enrollment numbers have gone down, but the needs of our students have gone up. And it's not just our students, it's also our staff members as well. I appreciate in this budget, as someone who's advocated since 2017 for a pathway for our staff to grow and mature, to be supported in their job duties and their job qualifications, that is represented in this budget. Not only is it represented by additional positions, but also, also in our HR department, we are undertaking the task of making sure that we stay equitable to our staff members by ensuring that we're not enforcing three jobs on one staff member and by comparison to our other jurisdictions. I appreciate the start of bringing in competitive salaries for our staffing. I think it's going to take a while, and we're not going to be able to fully do everything in this initial budget, but making that commitment to back up what it is we say we believe. I appreciate also the focus on all students, not just students who come from low-income families or have the ability to get tutoring, but every single student across the board, whether they're going to go into college or career pathways or in the trades. I think that that's outlined very clearly, not only in our strategic plan, excuse me, plan, but in the way that we're fun, in the way that we're placing funds in our budget. It's not just that I appreciate all of the things that are in the budget that would be specific to my district, but it's the fact that it's specific to every single district because we no longer live in a community where a student that just lives in my district just goes to school in my district. They could end up in Mr. Wilk's district, or Ms. Wall's district, or Ms. Jesse's district. And it's important that we are funding our schools and our staff in every district in a way that's meaningful for our students' growth and learning and achievement. I am just proud to be on this board. I am proud to be here to be able to support this budget, and I hope that when we present this budget before the Board of County Supervisors, that it opens up a chance for dialogue and further public education. And just as we have modified this budget process and made it more equitable for each member on this board and much more of an educational experience, I hope that we are able to replicate that instead of having a one-way conversation with our Board of County Supervisors so that we can continue our due diligence and explain to the public how it is that we're spending the funds and why it's important. So in closing with that, I just want to say thank you very much for this opportunity, and I highly support our budget.
Ms. Ralston, did you have anything to add?
No, I think it's been worked over.
Okay, very good. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. The first thing I'm going to say is thank you for answering all of our questions and for meeting with us. Secondly, I echo the sentiments of all of my fellow board members, from the alignment to the strategic plan, to this budget, to SMART goals, to something that I thought Mr. Wilk said that was pointing about being a special needs parent, as someone who sat at all sides of the table, parent, student, teacher, and when looking at this budget, I feel many voices were heard. To me, the alignment to the strategic plan makes us more competitive, financially responsible, and gives us strategic steps to achieve the goals. As I stated in the last meeting, this plan being aligned with the budget and the CIP directly aligned with the concerns Brentsville constituents and Brentsville staff have discussed with me over the last few years. I know the positions added will improve customer service and remove some burden on staff, and all of this is directly linked to student success and parental involvement. I am also excited about the renovations coming to the Brentsville district that is listed and outlined in the CIP. As my fellow board members went into such great detail, I'm just going to just reiterate how grateful I am for the superintendent and her team for listening and collaborating with the board. I support the new positions ranging from the Special Education Administrative Coordinator Supervisor, more APE teachers, Special Education Department chairs, parent liaisons, teacher assistants, also teacher assistants in kindergarten classrooms, transportation liaisons, and audiologists, behavior specialists, gifted teachers, special education transition specialists, social workers. I'm just excited about all these positions and the impact that they will make. Through investing and prioritizing in student achievement, we take concrete steps to outline the goals in the strategic plan, and I'm excited to support this budget. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, so I think this is an outstanding budget. I'll apply a few words of caution. This is the proposed budget, once adopted by the school board, will be our school board budget. We will take this in front of the county Board of County Supervisors to ask for approval of the budget as well, which typically isn't that difficult because we have a revenue sharing agreement. But much of the budget is dependent, much of the increase of the budget, much of the new investments we're making are based on what the General Assembly is going to do. General Assembly has adjourned last week. They are in budget negotiations, so the final budget is still unknown to school divisions across the state. And so until we know what we're going to get, this budget is based on our best expectation and best guess. My understanding is the budget could come in 50 million short, 10 million higher, based on what the General Assembly is going to do, and so there will be some maybe coming back here to the table and adjusting some of these investments. This is the fifth budget I've overseen since I was elected chair, appointed, elected, and then re-elected chair. I ran on a very transparent desire to improve student success, the safety and security of our students, the space and infrastructure we have here in the division, and the salaries. Those have been my four guiding principles in the five years I've served on this board. In prior years, we've made significant, significant achievements and improvements in all four categories. When we came, our counseling ratio was awful. We made significant improvements in the last three budgets on adding counselors, psychologists, and social workers. We have ways to go. We still have ways to go, and we're going to keep working on that. Our salaries were, they're still among the lowest in the Northern Virginia region, and our per pupil spending is still among the lowest in the region. We continue to lose great staff to divisions who are paying more. But in the five budgets I've overseen, we've seen significant increases in salaries at record pace, better than any other five-year period in the millennium, for sure. So the commitment I made, all of those commitments are based on, you know, improving those four buckets. Our strategic plan lines up with those buckets as well. Learning and achievement for all, a positive climate and culture, family and community engagement, and organizational coherence. This budget addresses all of those areas in addressing much of the long-term needs we've had that needed to be funded and taking some new and innovative approaches to problems we've had also for a long time. The amount of money going in this budget, and I think, Mr. Wallingford, what was, I think you had a number in the budget markup or earlier, the percent of monies going into the classrooms directly? Do we have a?
It's about 80.
So about 80% of the new spending, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, 80% of the new spending is going directly into classrooms. And we're talking about funding our teachers, adding teaching assistants, committing to gifted teachers, and you've heard it all already, career counseling, you know, instructional technology coaches, really just a fantastic budget if we get this all approved. Regarding, you know, health, safety, and security, we're working on security around the division. We're adding nurses, and we're continuing to work on our efforts with counseling. The family and community engagement is an excellent piece here, 35 parent liaisons, four transportation liaisons. We have a lot of work to do there, and so this commitment, this budget really begins a strong commitment to that effort. And salaries, this year, the average salary raise will be about 7% for employees. It could be as high as 10% based on the new salary fixes that have been installed in this budget. These salary fixes, many of these we wanted to do prior to the pandemic. In that budget with the pandemic year of 2020, we had some of these fixes built in, but we had to remove them because of reductions in our budget at that time and moving money to reserve cash. We've reserved cash this year because of the cost of gasoline going up, 2.5 million, if you heard it, the last budget markup is going towards that. So I want to commend our finance staff, John Wallingford, all the budget team, all of our principals, all of our folks working on the budget, which started back in July, it doesn't start in February or January, on putting together a strong budget that addresses- addresses our needs. And Dr. McDavid, for this budget aligning with the strategic plan, which is something all of us worked on, we invited the community to participate in the, you know, the, the, putting together the strategic plan, and that included inviting, you know, folks in different aspects of our community, prior board members, other folks in the community interested in seeing where the school should, school should go. My commitment and, you know, responsibility as, as a school board member and as chair is to try to get and fund our schools at the highest possible way we can. I make no secret about how I want to fund our schools. I believe that we need more monies from both the state and the county, and I will continue to fight for those monies. However, I believe we can get them in the best way possible. I have committed to, you know, doing it by hoping to convince the Board of County Supervisors, our General Assembly, to reduce the burden on property owners and find other ways to diversify the tax base. And so all of this is, again, dependent and highly dependent on the financial situation that the General Assembly ultimately approves and the budget they approve. So we will continue to lobby and work hard, and, and I will continue to do all of that work with the intention to support my efforts at student success, safety and security, space and infrastructure, and salaries. I believe all of these things will make our school division stronger, better, and a even better place to work than it already is. And so with that, I fully support the fiscal year 2023 budget as proposed by the superintendent. I will, if, Dr. McDavid, if you had any final comments before we take the vote, we will go ahead and take the vote unless I have anything. Yeah. Oh, got it. Okay, I'll take care, I'll do that. Oh, we define it?
No.
Oh, got it. Okay. All right, so Dr. Mc, we'll go with Dr. McDavid if she has any comments, and have to recess for a few minutes on a couple matters that we have to take care of legally with Mr. Wilk, and then we'll come back and vote on the budget. Dr. McDavid.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I really want to just take a moment to thank the entire school board for your support of the fiscal year 2023 budget and capital improvement programs and the process. I know that we made changes to the process this year, and you have spent so much time in that process, providing feedback and input and evaluating the budget as well as the process to ensure fiscal responsibility. We've spent countless hours in dialogue and review of the budget. I also appreciate all of your efforts to ensure that our stakeholders and their needs and wants and desires are represented in this budget as you provided your feedback. And so we're really excited about the amount of work that has gone into the budget as well as the dedicated work and stakeholder involvement that contributed to the PWCS vision 2025, launching thriving futures, which ensures that our priorities are driving our investments. So I'm really excited about that and thankful to the school board for your consideration of this budget. I also want to show appreciation for, on behalf of the entire school division, and I'm sure school board as well, for this year's revenue sources, which primarily include our PWCS residents, who are taxpayers, and their taxpayer dollars go directly to provide the resources to support funding our division's budget. And so we appreciate all of the revenue sources that we've received to support this budget and our strategic plan. I do want to acknowledge that, you know, with the strategic plan and the budget, we do have a significant portion of funds dedicated to improving overall wages and benefits within the school division, which is incredibly important to make sure that we can retain top talent within the school division and ensure competitive wages across the board, across the salary scale. And so salary, salary scale being a significant portion of the budget, we will be providing additional detailed information to our employees in the coming weeks around the salary scale as well. So I just really want to thank you all for your support. It's been a comprehensive process. I'm excited about where we are today with our strategic plan and hopeful that the proposed budget will be adopted to be the board's budget for the next school year.
Thank you, Dr. McDavid. We'll go ahead and recess for, let's make it 10 minutes, and then we'll come out and do the final vote. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene. We had to collect a couple final, final things we need to do before we vote on the budget. So I will turn the floor over to Justin Wilk. Mr. Wilk, Potomac District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologize, I should have prepped a team in advance, but every year I have to read that pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act, "I'm informing the public that my wife is employed as a teacher in Prince William County schools, but I am able to participate fairly in this transaction which applies to all Prince William County school employees."
Ms. Jen Wall, Gainesville District.
I'm also going to make a similar statement pursuant to the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act. I am informing the public that my husband has been employed as a substitute teacher in Prince William County Public Schools, but I am able to participate fairly in this transaction which applies to all Prince William School employees.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I will call the meeting for, I'll call for a vote on the fiscal 2023 budget CIP approval. Ms., yeah, please vote. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes of the Neabisco District.
And the vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. That's a big deal, everyone. Okay. Moving on to superintendent's time. See, now it's good that we had the student who really had to get out of here for a test. I screwed that up earlier. Well, now we, we will go to Dr. McDavid, superintendent's time. Dr. McDavid.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Again, thank you so much to the board for all of your engagement during the budget season, for your input, most importantly, for adopting the FY23 division budget and in support of our strategic plan. Thank you so much. And then again, additionally, later this week, we will be sharing a comprehensive update with all PWCS staff members regarding our proposed compensation investments to support our strategic priority to provide regionally competitive pay scales for all PWCS employees. I want to highlight a few celebrations, our robotics program and the many outstanding students, coaches, and mentors who participate and compete. Recently, eighteen robotics teams from Prince William County Public Schools qualified for the VEX Worlds, VEX Worlds competition to be held this May in Dallas, Texas. The VEX Robotics World Championship presented by the Northrop Grumman Foundation brings together the top VEX IQ Challenge, VEX Robotics Competition, and VEXU teams from around the globe to celebrate their accomplishments and compete for the championship. Congratulations to the Lake Ridge Elementary School qualifying team, as well as the two qualifying teams from Ashland Elementary School. Both Parkside and Gainesville Middle Schools are fielding three teams each, with one team from each of the following schools, the Nokesville School, Porter Traditional School, and Benton Middle School. Six teams will represent our high schools, with two teams representing Patriot High School and Woodbridge High School. One team representing Colgan High and one team representing Osborne Park High School. We are immensely proud of these teams, and we are looking forward to witnessing their talents and skills in the world competition. So good luck to all of our robotics competitors. Our strategic plan's number-one commitment is learning and achievement for all, and we have begun implementation. As part of our commitment to academic excellence for all student groups, PWCS will focus division-wide on the implementation and fidelity of the instructional core, which includes continuous improvement in the level of content, student engagement, and teacher knowledge and skill. By focusing on enhancing and improving the instructional core, PWCS students will be exposed to rigorous educational experiences. To ensure integrity to the teaching and learning process of the instructional core, school-based administrators are being trained in how to conduct instructional learning rounds, which is a research-based approach to improving teaching and learning and a priority in our strategic plan. During instructional rounds, educators observe instruction and work together to analyze those observations with the goal of improving classroom instruction. Over the past few months, I've had the privilege of joining instructional rounds at several schools, including Ellis Elementary School, Bevel, Gainesville, and Parkside Middle Schools, and Hilton, Unity Reed, and Woodbridge High Schools. I will be participating in instructional rounds at many more schools this spring, and I look forward to working with our associate superintendents, school administrators, and teachers towards continuous improvement to ensure academic progress for all students. This Monday, I had the honor of serving as the guest mystery reader for Ms. Bonet's first grade class at Covington Harper Elementary School. The students and I read "The Good Egg" by Jory John. Students were excited about reading, engaged in follow-up discussion, and asked great questions. It was the perfect way to close out National Reading Month. I would like to extend an extra special thank you to Ms. Bonet and Principal Sierra at Covington Harper Elementary School for the invitation. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Excellent, Dr. McDavid. Thank you very much. We will now move on to board matters. We will start, which side do we start last time? How about we, okay, Mr. Wilk, look, he's jumping into it now, there, after screwing up earlier.
Yeah, after my monologue earlier, I'll be quick. On 3-5, I had the pleasure to spend time with Principal Devers at Triangle Elementary. The visit included participating in the Class Art Project with Ms. Ivan's class. Following, I actually got to visit my colleague and friend at Swans Creek Principal Amanda Whitney. On 3-9, I participated in Montclair Elementary's Virtual Kindergarten Literacy Night, and then drove over to Potomac High School to attend their spring sports orientation meeting. On 3-11, I attended Grand Park Middle School Basketball JV and Varsity Team as they took on the Potomac Shores Seahawks. I do want to recognize my longstanding Grand Park Principal, Maria Ramadan, who has accepted a new job in another district, and she will be leaving, and Friday is her last day. So I want to thank Principal Ramadan for an outstanding service to Prince William County Schools. On 3-12, I had the pleasure of visiting with my son, the KLC, on a Saturday to view the Instructional Teacher Recruitment Fair. Want to recognize the entire HR team, Michelle Sazano, and everyone involved in all the my schools who participated. And finally, on 3-14, the Potomac Shores Seahawks Varsity Boys defeated Ripon Middle School to end their season undefeated, both JV and varsity. Although there are no quote-unquote playoffs in our middle school sports, the Potomac Shores Seahawks were the undisputed champions by regular season record, and they got to cut down the net. It was some cool stuff. So congratulations, and I cede the remainder of my time.
Ms. Argaport.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'm going to be quick again tonight, real quick tonight. I had the chance to visit over at Hilton High School to see how the renovations are going, and got to see their career center, which was amazing. They had everything you can think of in there. They had military career options, they had CTE-type of career options, they had all these colleges and universities represented, and it was a beautiful space that's been newly renovated. So congratulations and continuing the work of renovation. Osborne Park will be getting their windows, the rest of their windows, some of them have already been done. I know you're looking forward to your turf field. It's coming in 2023. Hilton's turf field will be starting this, this summer, I believe. I got to spend Saturday at the VBODA Band Assessment, and I got to hear OP Hilton, Colgan, Saunders Middle, and Lake Ridge Middle School bands. All of them earned superiors for the performances I heard, and they were absolutely amazing. I got to take in a little bit of the Hilton baseball game last night, and it was early because everyone's pants were still white. It was great. I think it was very early innings there. And then right after that, I went over to hear the Hilton Choir sing. They, they did their practice for pre-assessment in front of an audience. They had judges, you know, taking notes and things like that. They will be at Battlefield on Friday doing their assessment. He's taking, I believe, three groups there. So good luck to all of the choirs this Friday. I got to see, what was the other thing? Oh, yeah, I got to see the Osborne Park Girls. How could I forget you, girls? Got to watch several of their games. They were just great, great teams to watch. They got to go to the state tournament, came up a little short, but I am so very proud. I know the whole county was rooting for you. Got to speak with parents this week, a lot of, a lot about Colgan traffic. I know it's, we're still working on it. Just bear with us, it's, it's a process. I, I did make a post about, about the survey you could take with, with VDOT about that. Also got to talk with some other parents about the bus, bus issues. Mr. Wilk referenced in one of his things earlier today. We also got to meet with a Garfield student, IB student, who talked about student mental health. And this is a priority. It's, it's very, 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 very important, and I, I believe we were going to be hearing from Safe Schools Committee later about some of the things that we will be working on. So everyone have a great couple of weeks. We'll see you at the next meetings.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. So Ms. Sharifi is not here, but I just appreciated her comments about the difficulty that students face in getting enough sleep under our current high school start time schedule. And it wouldn't surprise me to see improvement in mental health and academics if we were to take up this suggestion that keeps, that has come repeatedly from our students. I know during the pandemic, that was the number-one thing, sometimes the only thing that the students liked about virtual school was the chance to get a little bit of extra sleep, and in some cases, a lot of extra sleep. Some of our students, you know, they work really hard for their, their grades and their athletics, and they, they get to bed at midnight, they get up at 5:00, 5:30, you know, they, they do that over and over again. So I really support that, that advocacy from the student reps. I wanted to also say that I was able to attend Tyler Elementary for a nutritional security event on Friday, the 4th. I met with division and school leaders, students from first through fifth grade, and heard about the school's great accomplishments in serving 1.2 million meals during the school closures. And USDA officials were there to highlight successes of our food service program in PWCS, so hats off to all of the individuals who help with that. I got to help make enchiladas and bread and bake, they break bread on site, and I got this really great apron from PWCS. So I'm ready to pitch in at a moment's notice if we have need for an extra set of hands. Congratulations to the Battlefield basketball, boys' basketball team for making it to the state championship game. That was a tough final game, but we're proud of you for your amazing season. Last weekend, I attended orchestra assessment. I am a violin player, so it was really fun to hear. There, I was able to hear a large number of orchestras perform, and in particular, Bull Run and Battlefield orchestras, and they did a great job. Those schools got straight ones. I know music educators, especially, it was a difficult year last year. We, you felt really hamstrung because, you know, through no fault of your own, because of being in a virtual environment for music, it's just very, very tough. But students are making steady progress, and it was really rewarding for me to hear that. I'm looking forward to chorus assessments this Friday at Battlefield High School as the host. Dr. McDavid already talked about robotics, I think it's fantastic. Eighteen teams to the VEX World Championship, that's just amazing. And that's the largest contingent we've ever sent to the VEX World Championships in the history of the program. So thanks to Denise Carroll and all, all those awesome robotics coaches out there, and parents and students as well. Let's see, I'm looking forward to going to the sea perch competition this Friday, which is also something that we do in Prince William County in the robotics field. I want to give special congratulations to the sled hockey Paralympic team and Evan Nichols, a Battlefield student who was one of six rookies on the team that won gold this last week. This is extremely exciting, and I'm sure we're going to hear more about this in future weeks, and hopefully we can bring him in and congratulate him because, like, this is just really amazing. What an opportunity for Evan. I appreciate everybody, and I want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow, and have a wonderful evening.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start out by speaking a little bit about the Governor's School, give you a more in-depth update next meeting, but for anybody who's interested, their research symposium, I think it's worth, save the date on your calendar, is May 13th at the Mason Campus. Congratulations to all of the students who have received early acceptance from already over 20 colleges and earned, I'm sure, the scholarship number will be astronomical as it is every year. But I want to give special congratulations to those who competed in the science fair. They sent over 20 teams and five, which were category winners, and out of those five, two won grand prizes. Two students, and please forgive me if I butcher your name, I apologize, Naaman Agawal and Desjewin, he's from Patriot, and Desjewin Boykin from Forest Park, will be participating in the 2022 International Science and Engineering Fair. I'm very excited about that. I also had the opportunity to attend a couple events. One at Porter Traditional for their STEAM night, which was held in person. They had a plethora of activities to choose from, and it also happened to fall on National Pie Day. I am aware that there's somewhere out there, there is a pitcher of an administrator who was pied in the face due to a few carefully answered pie questions from some students. So I'd love to see that event- So I'd love to see that eventually. Want to say a special thank you to Sabrina Easter, the PTSO president, who provided snacks, PTSO provided snacks and drinks for anyone who attended. I also was able to attend Featherstone STEAM night, which was virtual. It was really exciting, had a lot of fun doing the STEAM projects with my son at home, and as well as Featherstone's Reed's Night, which is still ongoing. I think tonight may have been their last night, which was also virtual as well. I want to, as we enter our testing and our AP testing and SOL season and all of that, have students recognize, especially those students for the last years who did not do any of this at all, to just take a deep, deep breath, know that there's support out there for you, take the time to ask the questions, get enough rest, but please, please, please ask the questions, get the help, the resources are out there as you enter this unknown season for a lot of you students who've never taken these tests. And I hope that we all give each other grace, especially with these students and our mental health. Testing is an important time of year, and it already causes a lot of anxiety, and I can only imagine how a lot of our students feel who have never undergone SOL testing or end-of-the-year AP testing or final exams, and I think that that's worth acknowledgement. And then again, I just, I also want to congratulate a former PWCS student, Robert Kelly, who is a swim coach for Special Olympics, very proud of our swim program here and what their students are able to do when they leave. And then that's about it. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
Today, in the news, we learned that 103 children died in Ukraine. And I know that this is not something that maybe should be on our agenda, but I can't help but think about these children who are not getting an education, who are living in fear. And so I want to start, because I did go over last, the last time, and I thought that Mrs. Murphy was still here, but I did, I did respond to her, I did apologize for going over. So I thought I'd do my, and one of the concerns was, of course, that I took time to give tribute to the people, those, to what's happening in Ukraine. So for the children of Ukraine, and our rights to all the people here tonight in Citizens Time, you have a right to speak, and I think I cherish, I think you should cherish that right to speak because they're fighting in Ukraine for that very right. So I'd like to take 10 seconds to recognize and whatever you want to do in a moment of silence for the children and families in Ukraine. Okay, I hope that we clocked that. I wanted to, tonight is Woodbridge night, I think, for me, because I was invited to participate in their mock interviews where they actually brought students in, and we interviewed these students, and we rated them, and they did, they actually did a very good job. We, I think they sort of forgot to dress for the interview, but other than that, it was really a great experience for me. And I also would like to recognize our, Tamika Dudley, I don't know if you guys realize that Sidwell Friends was nationally ranked for their performance as a basketball team, and she was the national coach of the year, but she was a coach at Woodbridge High School. She was named into the Hall of Fame in 2011. She met many state champions, but actually, the Woodbridge Vikings basketball, girls' basketball team were, she was a person that actually coached when they received the state championship and came into the boardroom. So this is Women's, recognition of Women's History Month, and I wanted to pay a special tribute to Tamika Douglas, and I hope that she will be able to come into the boardroom and we can recognize her. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston. Okay, thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. March is Arts and Education Month. I decided to celebrate this month by attending performances at our talented, by our talented PWCS students. I had the privilege of seeing the pre-assessments for both Gainesville Middle and Gainesville High School. Both pre-assessments were performed beautifully. I was also fortunate to attend the elementary all-county chorus concert with Ms. Agapour. It's my absolute honor to attend these displays of talent, to take a moment to focus and appreciate the hard work of students and staff with the support of their families. Next week, Patriot High School is focusing on social media awareness. They have a number of activities for students over the week to help students focus on mindfulness and talk about the impact of social media and that can have on them and their future choices. They also will be showing a video to the community. These events at schools do help bring awareness to issues that directly impact our students, and I want to thank Dr. Bishop for looping me in. Also, good luck to the robotics competitors, including Gainesville Middle and Nokesville School. Thank you to all those who came, and of course, thank you again to all students who come to our meetings. Thank you to the student athletes from Patriot and Brentsville High Schools, Brentsville District High School. I'm so proud to represent you on the board, and I loved being able to honor your achievements and hard work. I would like to highlight all of their accomplishments, but speak specifically to May Kelly, and as it is Women's History Month, and she is making history at the wonderful Brentsville District High School. Thank you to the athletes that came today, the families, the staff, the coaches, the athletic trainers, for all of their support. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, I want to first start off by adding a couple things everyone else has said. Congratulations to our amazing basketball teams who had great seasons. The OP Ladies Basketball Team finished as a semifinalist in the state championship. Patriot and Battlefield played, I think, four or five times to, you know, five times Patriot winning almost all four of them, and then losing to Battlefield in the semi, state semifinals. Two powerhouse teams, great seasons. Patriot was undefeated until that point. Battlefield went on to the state semifinals, or the state finals, and congratulations to them as well. And the Princeville District Ladies Basketball did a terrific, had also a terrific season. I share with Ms. Wall's desire that we should start talking about start times again for the high schools. That has sort of been on our agenda for now two and a half years running, and the pandemic delayed it, but I think that's something that we do need to start talking about. I want to thank our high schools this weekend. You know, Fairfax and Loudoun canceled their schools on Saturday because of the small amount of snow that came, and, and many students were stranded and couldn't take their SATs. Our division, thank you, Dr. McDade, stayed open, offered the SAT courses at many of our high schools that were offering it, and the SAT, the exam. Students studied long and hard for that, and it's very disruptive to lose that moment. So I can't thank our high schools enough, and Dr. McDade, for committing to making sure we keep our schools open. Congratulations to all the robotics team. I've had children in robotics for, continue to have them in robotics for many years now. It's a terrific program. Congratulations to Denise Carroll, the great work her and her team do, and I'm proud to, you know, we, we are adding a little bit more help to the robotics effort in this year's budget. There is a new position to help out with robotics. The science fair, fantastic effort. When the first year I came, we sent only one person to the International Science Fair. This year, we're sending four. This comes from the hard work of Julia Renberg and the, the Science Department of One and her team, that, but that, that science department's going to also get expanded in the efforts over there, and all the volunteers who help with the science work, thank them for doing a great science fair every year, and they, they had another successful one this past weekend. Congratulations to all the orchestra and bands for their terrific assessments. I continue to see them on Facebook. I, I have to say, you know, I enjoy seeing the, the work that our students do. It has been fantastic, and with all the issues we have, all the concerns we have, with all the long-term needs and short-term needs we have with the schools, I believe in my heart, this is one of the best school divisions in America, and I'm very proud that our students go here and that our parents choose to send our kids here and families choose to send their kids here. I think it's a great place with the best staff and teachers we have, and we're working very hard to keep them all, and we want to keep them all here and happy. So with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting.